Good evening and welcome to the May 4, 2021 regular session of Finley City Council. We will start with the roll call followed by the pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence.
Mr. Greenow?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Mr. Neimeyer?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Present.
Mr. Schindelbecker?
Here.
Mr. Slough?
Here.
Ms. Warnicki?
Here.
Mr. Wolfser?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will entertain a motion to accept the previous city council meeting minutes. Mr. Slough?
I have moved to approve the minutes as circulated.
Second, Mr. Wolfser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. The minutes are accepted. We have no add -- oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any add-ons or removals from tonight's agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. We have no proclamations. We have no recognition or retirement resolution. We do have one request for oral communication from Charles Williams to speak about cronyism. Mr. Williams, you have four minutes.
Mask up or down?
On.
Okay.
Just leave it on.
Uh, cronyism, the formative friends, so it shifts positions of authority without proper regard to their qualifications. The practice of supervising and awarding jobs and other advantages to friends and, uh, and colleagues, especially in politics and between political favors. Crony. The negative connection is that you are crony, you are up to no good together, particularly to friends, expressed by appointments to them to positions of authority regardless of the quality, uh, qualifications. The mayor has no business creating jobs for people, period, let alone for people who are stepping down from a job they previously had to make more money in less time than he still draws a check. Now, the person that is going to get the $65 an hour is Smeltzer, uh, the former city safety director. So, we hire a new city safety director, we're paying him $140,000 a year, we're having the former city safety director to come in to supervise him, tell him how to run his job. Now, I know for a fact Smeltzer had no business doing his job again. We had snow this year. We had kids walking the streets. There's 12 hours to get rid of your snow. Kids are walking in the streets. That's unsafe. But yet, you, uh, you have to mow your grass, which I'd really mow your grass. Snow and kids far more important than grass is. I've seen Smeltzer go after family on East and Dusty Street. He literally came on his property and intimidated him with the former mayor. And that's the guy we need to supervise? The city safety director? This is the person we need to pay $65 an hour to? I'm sorry. It's a joke. Uh, I would approve of this. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Williams? Hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Okay. Petitions.
An alley vacation request for Bright Avenue from Reinhardt Legal Services to vacate, um, Bryant Avenue from Tiffin Avenue to Lot 103 in Country Club Acres between Old Lot or 1112 in Country Club Acres, First Addition to the East and Confederate Square condos at Township 1 North, Range 11, South 9, Point West, Fourth Southeast, Fourth to the West. Hope I got that right.
Questions or comments? Mr. Russell?
Just a point of clarification. This is Bright Avenue, not Bright Road. This is another vacant, on paper only, street, and I put that in quotes, that I would challenge anybody to find if they hadn't seen the, uh, the rather packet. Uh, but this is not, uh, we had a, I think we misprinted the, uh, or a typo on the agenda. It is Bright Avenue, uh, a road that nobody has ever driven on. It's actually, uh, runs north-south, kind of to the loft of the, uh, uh, cigar shop on Tiffin Avenue. So, clarification.
Any other questions or comments? A petition to be referred to City Planning and Planning and zoning committee. Written communications. We have none. Reports of municipal officers and departments.
City Planning Commission Agenda for May 3rd, 2021.
Questions or comments? Agenda to be filed?
Officer shareholders disclosure form from the Hot Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control for Curious Enterprises LLC at 207 East Crawford Street in Finley. A check of the records show no criminal record for those who applied.
Mr. Slough?
I would move no objection to be filed.
Second, Mr. Russell. All those in favor that no objection be filed, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. No objection will be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding first quarter 2021 KPIs.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. The KPI will be, um, I guess, filed. Okay.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding the annual bids and contracts.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
A letter from Mayor Mern regarding District 13 Integrating Committee appointments. This is not required, House of Complimentary.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding Hometown Hero Program banners.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
Traffic Commission Minutes of April 19th, 2021.
Questions or comments? Committee, Commission Minutes to be filed?
Parks and Recreation Board Minutes of April 19th, 2021.
Questions or comments? Minutes to be filed?
A letter from City Engineer Jeremy Cowes regarding third capital improvement for 2021.
Question? I'm sorry, what?
Third, uh, capital appropriation for 2021.
Okay. Questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
Letter from City Engineer Cowes regarding 2021 Annual Street Resurfacing Turb Repairs Contract B Asphalt Project Number 32810900.
Questions or comments? Mr. Russell?
Well, Jeremy, let's get you broken in here at the, at the mic. So, this is our, uh, the asphalt part. So, is this, is this, we've already, we've already completed, like, we're working over in the Red Fox area specifically. Is this the asphalt for that?
Yeah, this is the asphalt portion. We have a concrete contractor right now. Um, this is just getting money through, get contracts around, um, no rush for, but it's just to get, get going when asphalt's ready, or once concrete's done, we can get started on asphalt.
So, it does not need to be done tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
Letter from Safety Director Smeltzer regarding Public Works Department Traffic and Fabrication Shop Project Number 31912500.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed? Committee reports.
The Strategic Planning Committee met on April 20th, 2021 to continue March 2nd, 2021 and March 16th, 2021. Discussions on the finalization of an RFQ for a contractor to assist with the initial data gathering for the strategic plan as well as review Baker Tilly's feedback. We recommend that the committee will, will move forward to complete the RFQ document and prepare for a release on May 10th, 2021, and that the committee authorizes the mayor to release the RFQ.
Mr. Wolfser?
Just a quick update for the rest of council that wasn't here for the Strategic Planning Committee, um, meeting that took place prior to this meeting. The committee has approved the final draft of the RFQ, and it will be going out on May 10th. The only thing that we've changed substantially is we've added an additional week between the release of the RFQ and the date when we will, uh, start to, um, work our way through the potential candidates. Everything else is pretty much on, on, um, schedule or in good shape.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the committee report. Mr. Hellman? So moved?
Moved to accept.
Second, Mr. Palmer. All those in favor of the acceptance of the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. Committee report is accepted. We have legislation. We have no resolutions, um, ordinances.
Second reading for ordinance 2021-35, an ordinance vacating a certain portion of a certain alley hereinafter referred to as the Bliss Avenue Vacation in the city of Finley, Ohio. Second reading for ordinance 2021-37, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Finley, Ohio to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Dancap County Combined General Health District and declare an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2021-38, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, acting service director of the city of Finley, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contracts with option years for the purpose of materials, chemicals, and service agreements needed by the various departments of the city of Finley, Ohio commencing January 1st, 2022, and declare an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2021-39, an ordinance appropriating funds and declare an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
Uh, because this is, uh, just a minor transfer of money from one fund to the other, I would move that council's district rules be suspended, and ordinance 2021-039 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Haas. All those in favor of suspending the rules of council, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed nay.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Schindelbecker?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
And Mr. Wolfser?
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended, and the clerk will give the ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2021-39, ordinance 2021-39.
Mr. Wolfser?
Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Greenow. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 2021-039, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed nay.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Schindelbecker?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser?
Aye.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2021-40, an ordinance authorizing the service director and the safety director of the city of Finley, Ohio to advertise for bids where required and enter into a contract or contracts for construction of various projects in accordance with the 2021 department equipment list, appropriating and transferring funds for said capital expenditures, and declare an emergency.
Okay.
First reading for ordinance 2021-41, an ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declare an emergency.
Okay.
First reading for ordinance 2021-42, an ordinance amending certain provisions of the codified ordinance, of codified ordinance number 2021-121 of the city of Finley, Ohio, known as the salary ordinance, to add a new position of mayoral special projects manager effective May 3rd, 2021, and declare an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
Got a question for the mayor. Couldn't you give us some, uh, background on this? And, uh, specifically, one question that I have is, uh, I know that, uh, Rob Martin's start as a service safety director was delayed so that he could transition Han Co. better. Did that, uh, I'm wondering how that affected the, the transitions that were already, are already in place with, uh, from Paul to Rob? And if this is any result of that?
Yes. So, overall, I think things have gone well for Han Co. and Rob, and certainly we want to make sure there's a clear transition in any position, especially when there's a lot of kind of random items that are continually popping up and business needs to move forward. So, what I'm asking for in front of you this evening is simply a position that will allow me to pay Paul to help with the transition that we had previously discussed. Um, in city government, we obviously can't have two people in the same position. Um, we also can't have, um, people in positions that we don't already have in the pay ordinance. So, what I would like to be able to do is have Paul at a lesser rate than what he is currently being paid, being paid at an hourly rate for when he is spending time providing services to the city of Finley by working with Rob or any of our other departments on a project, uh, over the next couple of months. It's at my discretion, um, but certainly recognizing that we want, uh, to recognize that Paul has a different position he needs to be focusing time on, and we have Rob to serve our community. So, we did not have a position that met the needs, um, of that, uh, position currently in our ordinance. So, that is what I am requesting before you. It does provide some flexibility in the future for me to hire additional people if we have a special project down the road, but certainly that would be an as-needed, uh, position and would certainly be communicated with you all prior to making such a decision. Um, but I want to make it very clear that, uh, this is temporary. It's to help in the transition, and, um, it's not at the same rate he is currently being paid and will be on an hourly basis. And we did have a budget as well. I recall during the budget hearings, we talked about there was going to be some overlap, so I'll actually probably be saving some money because we had given a little bit more cushion than what we're going to need here, as Paul's agreed to a lower amount. And, final point, sorry, um, the other item is Brian was licensed as a surveyor, as is Paul, with Brian's transition out of the city of Finley. We don't currently have a surveyor on staff, so this does also give us the ability to utilize Paul in that capacity if needed, again, at a lesser rate than you would pay if you had to hire a contractor to do it at this point.
Ms. Warnicki?
Well, in between you, she answered my question. (laughing). Hey, hey, I didn't know.
Mr. Hellman?
Uh, mayor, is, is there a sunset date on this, or is this, um, ability for you to hire people under this agreement to go on, to add in tonight?
It is, uh, there is not a sunset date. It is creating a new opportunity within our salary ordinance as we have with a number of other positions. It just gives us the authority, if we would determine it's needed, to hire at a certain pay range and within a certain scope of work. So, yeah, there's, there's kind of a number of random things that we could do, but again, special projects. So, if we said we needed somebody to come in and water the grass or the carpet for four hours, and we wanted to do that in that pay scale, we could do that. Obviously, that doesn't make sense, but it would have to be a defined scope.
Mr. Wolfser?
Mayor, have you agreed upon a, a pay range for Paul?
Yeah. At, at this point, it's planning on $40 an hour.
Also, you, I think you mentioned this, is a part-time position?
This is an hourly as-needed. He will only get paid for the hours that he comes in and actually works.
But it's overtime eligible?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Yes.
Okay. My apologies. It is.
Okay.
But I would not expect that. So, I guess, you know, it's defined as a part-time position, so if I was using someone in that capacity in excess of the part-time, then obviously they would get paid part, uh, overtime rather than switching to a full-time position, which is what we would prefer from a benefit standpoint.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Warnicki?
What is this budgeted for? Do you know? What is this specifically? I'm planning on paying Paul $40 an hour. Right, but you said that there was a amount in the budget. Oh, um, I think we had planned on, like, having a three-month transition with Paul full-time. Like, that's what we had put in the budget, um, so a good chunk of change will be saved. And are there, but do you have any plans? Like, say this takes two months and then Paul's gone, is this ability still going to be there, but right now you don't really have a plan to use the rest of that budgeted money for anything specific? No. No, the money would be given back.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Wolfser?
Mayor, I think the, the, one of the concerns that I've heard from folks is that we're, we are creating a brand-new position here, and it's not, it's, says it's part-time, but it really doesn't have to be part-time. And the concern from the folks I've talked out is, why are we hiring more people? The couple of things that were mentioned was that this is, if, why is Paul having to come back to do this training, uh, when he's been here, you know, understanding that the overlap time wasn't very long, but they're still unders, not understanding why we have to spend this money.
Well, okay, first of all, I would argue that we have lots of positions within our pay ordinance that we're not actually hiring people within. Pay ordinance is very defined in what you can, what individuals you can put in what positions, what pay you can pay them at, what they can do in their position. We did not have a position, because we, for example, we have Alicia Mitchell in my office that does projects, and I was like, well, let's just hire Paul in at that position, but it is a very defined scope within that. Did not meet the needs of giving us the flexibility to pay him, uh, $40 an hour and have him available to do surveying work if that is what we needed. Um, so that's why this new position is being created. Second of all, I think it's pertinent and prudent of us to make sure that there is a transition between the two departments, which we had been talking about for months, that we wanted to occur. This is a complicated position. There are projects that needed to be handed, that need to be handed off. There's information that will be beneficial for, for Rob to have, and there's relationships that Paul can help give some background on. So, anyone who has ever walked into a new position understands that sometimes you need a little bit of better support, um, and it could be, Paul could show up this week and Rob can be like, no, I've got it, we're good, and then in three weeks, we may have a question and say, hey, we need you to come in so, to go over these documents with us. I don't know what that looks like. That's why I'm asking for a very flexible position, and it's my responsibility as the mayor, who is held accountable to both you and the voters, to be able to then justify that expense moving forward and this position. Um, so I guess there has to be some trust in you all that I'm not just going to hire people willy-nilly. Um, these are dollars that I have to account for and, and held accountable for, and I think that we are going to get every dollar that we spend on this and more back in having a smooth transition and Rob being able to hit the ground running because he has Paul behind him, being able to help answer questions rather than him searching through files for three hours to find a document that Paul can tell him where it is in two minutes.
Mr. Hellman?
Um, mayor, based on your explanation, then, I take it that when it says here, um, that you would like this to be effective May 3rd and declared an emergency, that you would like this passed with first, second, and third reading to see?
Yes, I would. That would be great, because again, we were plant, we were hoping to be able to just make it work with one of the other positions defined within the ordinance, but with, um, Brian also leaving the city this week, um, so we needed a little bit more flexibility. And again, I would just reiterate that when we have an emergency clause within the ordinance, all that is defining is that we don't have to wait 30 days for it to take effect. So, um, yes, I would like you to pass it under emergency, and that's also why the emergency language is in the ordinance.
Mr. Neimeyer?
Was this, did this just become public knowledge this morning in the newspaper?
Well, your packet was sent out last Friday, which is when it became technically a public document and was posted online. However, I know Denise Grant did review it, uh, yesterday or today and reached out and asked some questions about it, which is when it then was ran today in support of tonight's meeting.
I just mentioned that because I had three phone calls today, and two were like, what's going on?
Yeah. So, it was in the newspaper today, and I would say that it, though, though it was all factual, I think it was slightly misrepresented on why this position. This is not something new. This is something we've been talking about for months, if you will. Again, we had to create this new position so that we could pay at a lesser rate, um, and have flexibility in what he is able to do for the city during this time. I thought the headline was kind of funny because it read, when I first saw it, I was like, wait, I'm getting a new position? I thought I was running for doing something new.
Mr. Wolfser?
Mayor, the, I think the concerns kind of go in two different columns here. Number one, we're creating a new position. We are indeed. And the fact that it's backdated to yesterday, and you wanted it pa, uh, passed on suspended rules. I think it's asking quite a bit, uh, of council to do that, to add a position on suspended rules for a very specific purpose, although you, that's your explanation, understanding that. If, if we did not pass this tonight on suspended rules, and it went to its second or, and/or third reading, the language in here still maintains it would be effective May 3rd, 21, so it's still post-dated back to the start of the pay period that you're looking to cover. So, my question would be, I don't know, Don, if that still, is that, that post-dating still effective? For pay reasons?
It's effective, but it's not, they wouldn't be in, in the position.
I can't have new work for us.
You can't pay somebody that hasn't worked it.
So, if you guys shut it down.
I'm sorry, Don. Don, repeat that one. Repeat your last line.
Mr.? Can I have you come up?
That's okay. You can just.
Well, it's on public record. We need, need it on the mic.
You're not going to pay a person for no, for no work. So, we're just creating the position and the pay. They don't work during that period, and they're obviously not going to get paid.
But if I need Paul to do work this week and they have not yet approved it, are we going to be able to pay him?
Uh, no, no.
So, I can't have Paul do, so, if you guys said you don't want to do this and shut it down, I have positions within the department. I can hire him as an assistant engineer right now, and we could pay him more, but then, uh, that doesn't make sense. I'm trying to save the city money. I'm trying to be clear about what his responsibilities are within the city. I can go put him in another position and have him work for the city and charge you all more. That's what we want to do here, but I'm sorry that I'm asking for it on last minute. That's because we were planning to put him in a different position, but it didn't meet the scope of work, and I didn't want to pay him a higher rate in a different position. So, that's, that's why I'm asking for it to be pushed through. That's why I feel like we've been very transparent about our desire to have a transition period between these positions, and that's what I'm asking you to agree tonight.
Mr. Greenow?
This may be just a little bit off the wall, but could we hire Paul as an outside contractor with a certain amount of time?
We don't do that, no.
Mr. Wolfser?
Can we sunset this at some point in time? This position? Versus leaving it open? So, could we say, can we put a not-to-exceed number on it? Like, you know, $5,000, $6,000, $10,000, whatever we think it's going to cover to get past the training period?
I don't think, now, and Don can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that's how the salary ordinance is able to be, um, amended. What you could do is, I guess, in two weeks, you could request a new ordinance be drafted that appeals it from the salary ordinance.
That would be good.
Any, Mr. Palmer?
Is there a limit to how many people can fill this position? Just one position for your special project at one time?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know. I don't, I don't hire that many, so I'm not planning, no. The law director can answer. I think we can have an unlimited number in a specific position once the position is created. Don, do you know?
Once, once you create it, if it's the same job.
Yeah, so.
It's only one person at one time, could be a spe, be a special project manager.
No, I think we can have as many as we want.
We can have as many as we want?
Right.
Correct.
Well, that's just setting up the.
Within the budget.
So, all this is doing is saying that if I want to pay someone, so, for example, we have maintenance class, maintenance workers class one, ma, maintenance workers class two, ma, and in each of those, we have very defined responsibilities and skills and certifications that go with that. You also have a defined pay range. So, what I am asking for here is having this more vague, less discreet position with So what I am asking for here is having this more vague, less discrete position with a broader pay range, so that if we need to bring someone in for something down the road, right now, we don't have any flexibility within those positions, within the city ordinance, that gives us that flexibility. So, for example, we have multiple people in our public works department that are maintenance workers class one, so you can have as many, but that just defines what they are able to be paid and what their general description of their position is.
Mr. Wilson?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I keep asking questions on this. Don, we were backdating this to May three, but yet we, we couldn't let it go until two weeks from now and have it backdated to May three and still pay that. So are you saying that we're, I just want to make sure I understand, we can't pay them for yesterday's work?
He hasn't done any work this week. We're waiting for this.
So I guess I'm asking why the backdating is in there?
So it's clean with the, meets the same pay periods.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? So the comment period is over. Mr. Russell?
For the reasons the mayor stated, so that we can help with this transition for service safety director, which I believe is an extremely important position, and so that we can have a surveyor on staff during this transition, I would move the council statute of rules to be suspended, and this ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero four two be given its second and third reading.
I'll second that.
Mr. Hellman, second. All those in favor of suspending the rules of council, say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Nay.
Mr. Palmer?
Nay.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Schindelbecker?
Nay.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Nay.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
And Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
I have four names.
Six. What's your vote?
I have four names.
Rules of council have been suspended. Six to four? I'm sorry, I need seven.
Got to, got to have seven.
Okay, the rules of council have not been suspended, so we will move on to the next ordinance.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty one dash forty three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and or service safety director of the city of Finley, Ohio to enter into an agreement for the purchase of traffic and fabrication shop for the city of Finley's Public Works Department located on Corey Street, appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Old business. New business. Mr. Russell?
Planning and zoning on May thirteenth at noon at the conference room in the council office.
Any other new business? Ms. Mayor?
Just a couple of quick items. Wanted to reiterate, as you saw in your packet, we are continuing to just provide you a summary of the key performance indicators. That's because the key performance indicator packet is pretty expansive, so those continue to be available on a quarterly basis on our website. So anyone who is interested in reviewing those, those are easily accessible, and if anyone has questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. Additionally, downtown, the next round of Hometown Hero banners have gone up. They look wonderful, and so those will be up for May, June, and July, which will be great for Memorial Day as well as Fourth of July holiday. So that's great. And then, lastly, I'm pretty disappointed, we all didn't go ahead and approve the special projects manager. I think it's disappointing when we're swayed by political nonsense and misrepresentations of information. This is something that I know wasn't ideal, but it's what we need to do to continue to transition, and if you guys don't have faith that I'm not going to just hire people willy-nilly, that's pretty disappointing. So I appreciate the continued good, good work of you all, but I think we kind of should have moved that one forward. So I appreciate everybody's time this evening.
Any other new, or I'm sorry, yeah, new business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hawes? So moved. Second, Mr. Slough. All those in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Mayor, adjourn.
Mayor, don't take it personal.
Oh, it's all right. I just think you guys are doing a disservice to the city by a bad vote. But that's all right.